Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, May 28th, 6:00 p.m. If you'd like to get started on time. Please feel free, number one, that everybody was notified, the press and the public were duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. This is a big crowd tonight. Glad to see everybody here. If you don't mind, I'm going to say identification, followed by pledge allegiance and roll call. Feel free to follow along. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. As we begin our summer season of Memorial Day, let us not forget those who sacrificed the ultimate, their lives for our country. I ask that you look over all of those who are gathered here tonight, our city families, our island residents, and our guests and their families. I ask that you look over and protect all of our public safety personnel, our military and their families, both locally and around the world. I thank you for life itself and for our individual liberties and freedom of speech. I ask for your guidance and wisdom tonight in our governing of our city and making decisions that affect our residents and our visitors for not only now, but for future generations. It is in your holy name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask our city clerk, Ms. Marie Copeland, for her second-to-last.
She's coming.
She's coming. Take your time. We'll catch our breath.
We just got out of rehearsal.
Y'all catch your breath as you sit.
I know.
Let's give Marie a second to turn on the recorder.
Do we have an agenda? An agenda if you have one.
We got you back-to-back meetings.
And I had to run back where I was going.
I know. She has it.
You want to go back and do the roll call?
Yes, ma'am. We're waiting on you.
Okay.
Roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Here.
Councilmember Forin.
Here.
Councilmember Kingham.
Here.
Councilmember Roy.
Here.
Councilmember Rice.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Intervent administrator Pedrosa.
Here.
And Attorney Copeland. Here. All residents accounted for.
Thank you very much. This is Marie's second-to-last one. This is a big one. Next on our business appointment is the appointment and administration of oath of office for our new police chief. This is a big night for Isle Palms. It's been a long time since we've done this. I'm going to ask Kevin to come up front with his family.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kevin Cornet as the chief of police for the city of Isle Palms.
Second.
That's all. All right. Aim in the back. All right. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Kevin Cornet as the chief of police for the city of Isle Palms.
Second.
Second.
Can I get a woo-woo?
Okay. I thought we'd already done this a month ago, but we'll do it again. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? It's unanimous. Kevin, come up front. Stand this side. Yeah, the whole panel, you're welcome to the city panel. All right, Kevin Cornet, do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
I, Kevin Cornet, do swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances of the city of Isle Palms.
According to the ordinances of the city of Isle Palms.
To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
That I will, to the best of my abilities.
That I will, to the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. Kevin is here with his wife Sarah and four children, Timothy, Chase, Zach, and Scott. A little background, he's originally from Bismarck, North Dakota. Think about that, North Dakota, South Carolina. He graduated from the Lower Richmond High School in Hopkins, South Carolina. Chief Cornet then attended Marion Military Institute in Marion, Alabama, where he received his commission in the U.S. Army. Chief Cornet began his policing career with the city of Columbia Police Department in Columbia, South Carolina. While at Columbia, he was assigned to numerous roles that includes South Carolina Reaching Community Response Team, Patrol Supervisor, Warrant Team, Supervisor for Organized Crime and Narcotics, Special Weapons and Tactics, Honor Guard. He was then appointed to be police chief of Springdale, South Carolina in 2012. Chief Cornet is certified hostage crisis negotiator. I hope we don't need that on Isle Palm. A certified instructor, and you're going to have to help me on this one, Kevin, the SCCJA.
South Carolina Criminal Justice Captain.
Thank you very much. An active shooter response instructor, a dear instructor, a great instructor, a school resource officer, a valor instructor, a taser instructor, and stop the bleed instructor. He has a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice Administration and Management and has a Master of Science in Criminal Justice with a focus on leadership and management. Chief Cornet is the graduate of the 270th class of the FBI National Academy. Now, what I don't have in here is a lot of small stuff. It says here, "I'm a certified paint instructor." Give us a little bio about you and your family.
So, my wife, the paint instructor comes from my wife. My wife owned a business in licensing painting furniture and teaching paint classes, and she convinced me that for our honeymoon, we should go become paint instructors together. I'm a certified paint instructor, and under her age, I might be able to teach you something. All of our kids are here, 10 is 10, Chase is 8, Zachary is 7, and Skylar is 2, about to be 3. So, it's never boring. And I have many other family members here and members from Springdale Police Department and Columbia Police Department here as well. So, thank you all.
So nice.
Okay, next on our list is the reading of the previous meeting's journals. Do I have a motion to approve?
So do.
Second.
Any changes? Here are none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Citizens' comments.
I'll take your voice, your call.
Okay, I have... Yes, sir, come on up. Name and address, please.
John McMaster, 2801.
John, come up front, please, I'm sorry. And we're going to, folks, if everybody would mind, we're going to, since we've got such a large crowd tonight, we're going to try to keep everything like three minutes. If somebody's already said it, just come up, say your name, address, and say, "I concur." So we don't have two hours of citizens' comments.
John McMaster, 2801 Palm Boulevard. I didn't come to the meeting at Rex Center because I didn't think I had a horse in this race, but I understand you're going to start pulling cement trucks down Palm Boulevard at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. And since my lovely wife, the light of my life, wants to sleep at night, I think that that might be a bad idea for us.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hi, I'm Deborah Johnson. I'm at Fort Grand Pavilion, and I've lived at my permanent residence since 1995. I was here during the construction of the Boardwalk Hotel, during the Boardwalk Homes, and also the Village. The... It's not on? Is that better? Okay.
closer to your mouth.
It's not on? Is it on? Okay. All right. So, I have plenty of experience with construction in Wild Dunes, okay, from a resident standpoint. I was out of town for the public forum, but I listened to the Public Safety Committee audio as well as the video for the public forum. And one of the things that stood out for me was whoever was presenting in the Public Safety Committee, I couldn't hear because it was just audio, was someone from the construction project said, "We're just realizing the significance of the construction project." I'm like, really? This significance of pouring all this concrete should have been realized two years ago, three years ago, whenever they had it, in the construction planning phase. So, what I'm hearing is that they're proposing to start at 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. and then start the regular construction. Normally, the regular construction doesn't start till 7:30, but I understand they can do quiet work starting at 7:00. And I understand in any event that they're talking about, these events, is one truck every six to 10 minutes for a total of 60 trucks a night, okay? And I couldn't tell from the presentation of how many events they would be doing in a row. Like, is one event Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or one event just Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Thursday? But if you look at those, that means that if they did an event on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, no one would get any sleep, starting from Tuesday morning till Friday night, basically. So, how can you expect people to live in that situation with no sleep? I just did a rough calculation. It could be over 40 hours of no sleep. I don't think that's acceptable. I have a sick husband, has cancer. He has to have his sleep, and he has to have his rest. The nighttime construction, to me, is just not acceptable. The... Also, I don't have any confidence in the construction project team to comply with their promises. I heard over and over in that presentation, it says, "We will try to mitigate the noise. We'll try." No one said they would mitigate the noise. They said they would try. So, they could come up and say, "Oh, we tried. We can't, sorry," and they continue down their business. So, who's going to hold them accountable? Who is going to measure their compliance? And who from the city is going to be responsible to be there every night that they have this pour and to make sure they comply? Whoever that is, I want their phone number, okay? So, I'm just wanting to say that this is unacceptable, and I would like for you to not approve this. Thank you very much.
Rusty Streetman, 4004 Palm Boulevard, and I want to thank council for allowing me to speak tonight. And it's about the same subject, basically. It's about the work that's going on at Wild Dunes and the item that's on the agenda tonight. I had, I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the public forum on May 16th, asked a couple of questions, and I did, I went back and did a lot of reading because I hadn't heard a lot about the subject. I knew the hotel was being built, but I hadn't heard a lot in regards to anything presentation-wise. But I also attended the public safety meeting where it was first presented. That's where I really got interested. And then I spoke at the Ways and Means Committee meeting last Tuesday on the 21st to express my concerns about the project also. And I'm here tonight to make it clear that myself, along with the citizens who spoke at the Ways and Means Committee last week, that we should be abiding by the ordinances that are already in place in Isle of Palms, the noise ordinances, the work ordinances that we have in place. And as a reminder, and I know the council realizes this because they're the ones that did it, but in April 2018, we adopted the same noise and work ordinance that Wild Dunes has in place, and I think it was unanimous by council. So, you know, to do something different, I think, is wrong at this point. And there are some major issues, concerns. I'll try not to be redundant, and I'll try to be as quick as I can, but the 35 trips or events of concrete night pours via Palm Boulevard, utilizing a lot of trucks, that's going to be noisy. We do have families that live along Palm Boulevard. An estimate of over 2,000 trucks, as I understand it, over the next 10 months, with a lot of that work being done during the high tourist season and storm season, and of course, again, 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. And citizens who work for a living, and there are a lot of them, are typically sleeping during that period of time. I think the timing is poor in that a lot of it is going on during the tourist season and the storm season. Questions I would have, why couldn't the schedule and timing of this work have been pushed back to the off-season to help minimize traffic disruption and noise? How do we intend to monitor the speed control, the noise of concrete trucks rolling pretty much full speed up Palm Boulevard overnight, gearing up, gearing down, 21st Avenue, 41st Avenue, Wild Dunes Construction Gate? And are we, as a city, going to provide additional traffic control and at what cost to monitor this additional expense to the city and citizens? There's also the potential noise and lighting issues with the work crews themselves as they work overnight. I think that could be a real issue, not so much for myself, but for the Wild Dunes residents that live nearby. And also, where do the overnight construction workers park during all of this? We know the hotel's going to be built. I mean, that's a given. That, you know, there's no doubt about that. And trucks will need to utilize Palm Boulevard to get it done. No doubt about that, too. But I do think, as a citizen, that the 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. proposal will have significant, major impact on full-time Isle Palms residents and their quality of life during the 10 months this is going on. I'm in favor of abiding by our ordinances that are in place and putting responsibility firmly on Lowe's Enterprises to find ways to make this happen with minimum disruption and noise to our full-time, tax-paying citizens. Our city and its citizens should not be forced to stretch the intent of the ordinances that are already in place and make exceptions just to accommodate this project. Maybe it's, maybe it's a plan to extend the schedules for pours and do more after the high tourist season. Maybe, maybe it could be daytime deliveries, you know, 9:00 to 3:00, something like that, instead of overnight. Speaking for myself again, and a couple of other neighbors who live near me, we would rather have the noise and inconvenience during the day than overnight. One example, I'm speaking for a neighbor tonight who couldn't be here, Terry Corbett, who lives next door to me at 4006 Palm. She's a physician at the Naval Weapons Station, or the Naval Hospital, I should say, has to leave for work in North Charleston at 5:00 a.m. each weekday morning, some mornings at 4:00 a.m. So, it would be a real inconvenience for someone like her, too. And she lives right there on the corner where 41st makes the turn there. So, I would ask, with all due respect to council, stand firm on this issue, expect the developers to come up with other solutions to seek to minimize the disruption, this recommendation with cause. So, residents first, and let's comply with the ordinances. Thank you.
Yes, come on up, please. We will get to everybody, I promise.
Good evening. Jim Owens, 2805 Palm Boulevard. My issue is concerning parking on Palm Boulevard. One, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing. Double parking, triple parking on either side of Palm Boulevard, it clearly states that it's parallel parking, period. And we are having stacking going on on both sides. I had an officer out there the other day, Officer Thompson, who's, I believe, is a livability officer. He did write a ticket for a car double parked. The only officer that I've seen write that particular ticket. It's dangerous. Jimmy, you have put out a, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, you put out a photo or a graph that you sent out into the cyber space that shows that you can't do it on either side. So, there needs to be some uniformity and enforcement, period. Thank you very much, and I would hope that y'all would consider that. I'm tired of calling. I got dispatch on automatic dial. They don't even ask me my name anymore. And I, I'm telling you, it's a serious issue. And I know we're in high season. I know that you've been looking at other places, but you know what? That doesn't do any good. Write the damn ticket. Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Gabash, Strategic Partnerships Officer for the South Carolina Aquarium. I'm here to, on a lighter note, to talk about the Turtle Truck 5K, which is on Saturday, September 21st. You guys have been nice enough to support the Turtle Truck the past few years, and it is such a great event for the aquarium. It brings over 700 runners, Tile of Palms, during the off-peak season, and it supports the critical rehabilitation efforts of the Sea Turtle Care Center. So, with your support and this run, we've been able to rehabilitate 274 turtles back into the ocean, and I think we just got three more in yesterday. So, it's critical to, for food and everyday operations. So, we really hope we can count on your support again. The event is also a great way to share beach conservation messaging with everybody. We host a beach sweep before the run takes off and encourage lights-out, filling in your sandcastles, the reduction of single-use plastic, and taking everything with you. So, we hope that we can count on your support again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Hi, my name is Dan Tylak. I live at 11 Edgewater Alley. I've lived on the island since 1988. We've had properties. We are at the corner of Edgewater and Palmetto Drive. We're about a half mile from the new hotel construction site. So, we, we hear traffic and we hear the pylon activity on a daily basis. We're within, our master bedroom is within 20 feet of Palmetto Boulevard, so we get all the exiting Wild Dunes traffic. So, we're very familiar with what's going on right now. And if I understand the nightly proposal, the main reason for it is because traffic is a nightmare on Palm Boulevard, particularly in the summer. And what I am curious about is, can we more effectively control Palm Boulevard during those pouring times? Currently, we're providing multiple times the amount of parking spaces that are required by law for the island. Can we eliminate, restrict, or have one-side parking so that we can have a smooth thoroughfare so that the construction activity could go on in the daytime rather than in the evening Palm Boulevard is a nightmare, and in Sunday, we were coming back from a Spoleto event, and twice, people literally stopped on Palm Boulevard because they saw people coming back from the beach, and we had to wait for 10 minutes for those people to load their car and get pulled out so that the guy that was parked on the street could pull into that parking spot. So, it is not being patrolled at all. It's a nightmare, and if we can more effectively control it, maybe we can address Lowe's situation at the same time. If you guys decide to move forward with the Lowe's proposal, again, I'm curious about what the anticipated route will be, how much noise will be associated with those trucks, where will they be cleaning those trucks? Cleaning is not a quiet activity. And like I said, we live a half a mile away. We hear all that construction activity now. So, there's going to be a lot of citizens that are going to be impacted by that, and they're going to be very angry at, at missing sleep at least 35 times. So, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Sir.
Not you.
Thank you. My name is George Page. I live at 5 Forest Trail, Court 1. I'm here to talk about the livability of certain uninhabited homes on the island. I happen to live next door to one that's been casually called the haunted house. I moved here and, well, I bought here in 2010. The house next door was basically in a similar condition when I bought, and since that time, no improvements have been made. It's just continued to become more and more dilapidated. I brought pictures here of the house that I live next to, and also brought just one other of another home that's in the same condition. It's overgrown, it's ridiculous. I've seen several of the councilmen ride by. I was at the safety meeting earlier this month, and without a doubt, every one of them said, "My God, I can't believe that. There's something wrong when we can't patrol or control the circumstances that I live next to and so many other people on this island live next to." It's a safety issue, and that by itself ought to tell you there's something wrong if it's in the safety committee. The property values around us, I mean, if that thing were to sell, it would reduce my property value along with everybody else on the cul-de-sac. The looks of it, it just doesn't fit the Isle of Palms the way it should fit. It's just, at the meeting, in the safety meeting, there was, issues were discussed, and there was going to be some sort of resolution. I'm here to hopefully hear that y'all have some sort of resolution tonight and that there's something been discussed. On secondary issue, who is setting the parking prices at the marina? Now, owners have to pay $5 to put their boat in and $10 to park on the weekend. You know, we just spent, I don't know how many millions of dollars in this guy's sea whale. We're getting ready to spend millions and millions more on the docks, and we're having to pay to park. I think that's a bit absurd. End of that. Did you do it?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Please. So, thank you, councilmembers. I'm, I don't live on the island, but I was here for an incident that happened on the island. Do I have a voice for that as well? Okay, great. So, my name is, yes. So, I don't live on the island, I was saying, but I was here because of an incident that happened here on the island. And my name's Brad Strobel. I've got a, I'm going to pass a couple pictures down, if that's okay, and I'll keep it brief. I've got a six-year-old daughter. We were here in April, visiting the beach, and she was attacked unprovoked by a pit bull here on the Isle Palms. So, the dog was from out of town. The vaccinations expired three and a half years ago on, on this pit bull. And I've got, I'd like to give a lot of credit to the first responders here at Isle Palms. We didn't call 911. Other people on the beach, just because it was traumatic, did. So, we had police officers, firefighters, EMS there almost immediately. So, really, kudos to them. They did a great job calming everyone down. Unfortunately, the treatment she required was more than they could offer here on site. So, they referred her to East Cooper, and she got three sutures. After that, because the dog was not up to date with its vaccinations, it was then shifted over to a DEHAC issue where the dog was quarantined and monitored out of town, by the way, by, by someone else. So, as a father, you know, I'm trying to find some good in a bad situation here, and so, not here to complain, but maybe just to get everybody... I know this is something that's been talked about a lot of how, you know, how to improve dogs visiting the beach, you know? So, how do we find some, some good in a bad situation here? I don't know. What I would say is, I think it would be nice to see some of the local officers trained as far as ensuring the gap is closed, there was no citation issued for the $200 fine that should have been issued for the dog not having a South Carolina rabies shot. So, that one, that $200 fine fell between the cracks, if you will. The $500 fine for the dog at large, I think, is what they called it. Because the dog was on a leash, the leash was on a sand spike, which obviously could not hold the dog when it decided to attack. That $500 fine was reduced to $130. So, you know, it's just, what message is that sending when you have, you know, this type of, of attack? So, here today, just to ask everybody to reconsider it, a high priority. I know there are other folks, and I know this makes everyone cringe, not just the pictures, but the thought administratively of having a visitor's permit to ensure that your dog is vaccinated. I'm not sure, I don't have the answers. I'm just saying, there's got to be a better way, folks. So, if our family's, you know, incident can help anyone else, then mission accomplished here tonight. So, thank you, and I can pick the pictures up from Councilmember Sandy, if that's okay.
Excuse me. How is your daughter?
She's fine. Thank you very much. So, you know, it's, again, it could have been much worse, and I feel some social responsibility to, to try to find something here. So I'm going to reach out to the local county where the dog resides and let that animal control officer know that, that, you know, the ingredients are there for, for disaster again. But if anything positive walks away from this, then again, mission accomplished here tonight. Okay?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Joe Horek. I live at 65 Twin Oaks Lane. And yes, I'm kitty-corner from where they're building the new hotel, but I'm not complaining about that. We need to have bicycle lanes on Palm Boulevard. I tell you, these bicyclists, they could care less if they're riding in the middle of the lane or on, try to get over into the end of the lane. And I guess it's against the law to ride a bicycle on the sidewalk. Is that correct or not? Police officers, anybody? Okay. But anyhow, it's just getting to a point. I mean, and they, you know, you pass by, and they give you this look, and they give you a, a finger, to be perfectly honest. I'll just use it that way. And it's, it's ridiculous. Someone is going to get hurt. And I know Ted had told me he was hit one time at the meeting last week that I attended. So anyhow, we need to have, because west of the connector, as you go down a block or two, there are lanes now for bicyclists, which I think are great before the, and then it continues into Sullivan's Island. But we need to do something, even, you know, I know there's easements and everything else, but we have to have bicycle paths in that they stay in single file, which they normally do. And it's that bad in Wild Dunes, too. But I think Palm Boulevard, all the way down 41st Street, we have to have that. And secondly, on the, regarding the work that's going to be done at the hotel, these cement trucks are very heavy. How are they going to work against our connector? I mean, those things are heavy trucks, and if they're going to be having 600 trucks or whatever the number are, that's going to do some damage to the roads. Who's going to pay for that? Lowe? We don't know. And our streets, too. So those are the two things, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kelly Thorvolsen, South Carolina Aquarium. I'm here to talk about the back, the single-use plastics ban on the beaches. I'd like to first just take the opportunity to thank the Isle of Palms for being on the forefront of coastal preservation along the South Carolina coast. As coastal populations increase, as well as our visitors to the islands, so does environmental pressures on these delicate ecosystems. At our South Carolina Aquarium Sea Turtle Care Center, we have rehabilitated 27 turtles that have ingested marine debris, and 22 of those 27 were just in the last four years. This is an astounding increase. It's not sustainable for sea turtles, and it's not sustainable for, really, our way of life. Over the last two years, over 85,000 pieces of debris have been picked up on the Isle of Palms and documented in the aquarium's litter tracker, the Litter-Free Digital Journal. Over 85,000. And this is not all of the debris that's being picked up. There are plenty of litter pickups that aren't being logged here. Much of this litter is in the form of single-use plastics and styrofoam. These litter cleanup efforts have increased over time. There are more and more people wanting to be involved and help protect our beaches and our sea turtles and other marine life. But there is a never-ending supply of fresh litter for every single person that wants to get out on the beach or on the roadway, for that matter. We can't clean our way out of this problem, so that's where legislation comes in. We need to do everything we can to avoid being Virginia Beach today, who has about 10, what was it, 10 tons of trash that was left on their beaches from Memorial Day weekend. And that's where we're all headed if we can't get a handle on these, these single-use plastics that are so common. Isle of Palms can continue to lead the way. The South Carolina Aquarium is grateful for our partnerships, our close partnerships on the island to help mitigate these complex conservation issues. And we thank you for all you do to preserve water, wildlife, and wild places. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Michaels. I live on 747th Avenue. And I would just like to piggyback off of what was said. As an avid surfer and a resident, I am also a member of the turtle team. I'm just, would like to say that I'm in full support of all the ordinances that have been passed to reduce our plastic pollution. And it's just really harmful to us humans and marine life. And I would just like to say thank you for all the work you've done. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Fred Shinners. I live at 10 Fairway Village Lane. And I'm sorry I got here a little late, but I assume you all have had some words tonight relative to the noise ordinance discussion you're going to have later this evening. I, I guess I'd like to speak against the provisions of changing it. I think the Lowe's people in talking to the, within the gates of Wild Dunes were very specific early on, talking about the problems we would have with the, the pounding going on relative to putting supports in and thinking that would be done. Now we're talking about all-night lights. We're talking about mega trucks rumbling down the roads. We're talking about beeping going on, let alone the guests that they are trying to support. I can't see how the residents of the community can go on and accept that over a long period of time, of which they're talking about. You all have done a great job promoting Wild Dunes as an idyllic place to live, to support a number of ordinances to maintain that. I really think you ought to think seriously about maintaining your noise ordinance and not changing it for the benefit of the profitability of a commercial organization, even though they do pay a lot of taxes going forward. Believe me, they can afford it. They're about to build a huge hotel downtown. So it's not a, a, a financial burden on them at all. I think the burden of change would be on the residents within at least a half a mile of the building site. Not alone, the crowds going down Palm Boulevard at night with both tourists and residents trying to sleep for the next few months. So I would hope in your consideration, you think about that, and I would hope you would vote not to change the noise ordinances going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember.
I'm, I feel kind of bad for taking up your all time because this is relatively personal. And in that, I got a ticket for having chickens last week. And so doing, there's a presently, yes, sir?
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, sir. John Mart, 18 Seagrass Lane. Sorry, sir. So in that, my consideration is, in the, the quiet little place in my neighborhood, I sent some good information up the road regarding those chickens are quiet, less than 60 to 70 decibels, which is probably quieter than my loud mouth. Waste, not an issue, blah, 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 whatever else. I just, I won't go to the details. You all have far more important things. If you would all please consider, if nothing else, a variance to the, the chicken or the foul law, that, you know, small number of chickens, small chickens, quiet chickens, absolutely no roosters. So just a consideration. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry for taking up your time.
Anyone else, please? Yes, please.
Public speaking, speaking is torture for me. I'm sorry. My name is Kay Griman. I live at 1457th Avenue, right outside the Wild Dunes, right next to all the construction site. I've owned my home for 20 years. We've been coming here for 50 years. I'm here to speak out against the nighttime construction. The big-money hotel construction company wants to work at night. They're asking to change the ordinance set by our town so they can run their concrete trucks. And if they run their concrete trucks and they're bringing the concrete in, they're going to have to bring in bright lighting at night. Can't work without the lighting. They're going to have to bring in workers to take care of that. That's going to involve more vehicles. And for a very long time, I've dealt since the beginning with the shaking of my house, the rattling of my dishes, through them installing their pump station, through their pounding of the pylons, and I knew that was going to happen. There's nothing I can do about it. But now you're asking to change an ordinance for the big-money company. And I just don't think it's fair to the citizens. I really think that your residents' first motto is a great motto, and it ought to be followed. There is an 80-year-old woman right up against there. She's going to, what, be awake from 2:00 a.m. on till how long? That's not fair to her. There are two young children on houses right on Palm Boulevard. One at 57th, one at 55th. Houses right on Palm Boulevard. They're going to be affected. They're not going to be able to sleep at night. I'm not going to sleep at night. How many other people are going to be disturbed? I just don't think it's fair to the community. Lowe's knew ahead of time that they were having to run concrete trucks. This isn't news to them. I think it only benefits them. And I ask you, please, please, do not change the ordinance. Thank you.
There are a lot of brave people. Abby Smith, I live at 157th. I'm one of the people Kay was just mentioning. I live there. I've only been blessed to live there for a year, but I love my home and, and love the island. It's, it's been such a wonderful, wonderful place to be, even through the construction. It's just no place like it. I do live there with my three-year-old son and my husband. And the thought of having those construction trucks come in the middle of the night with a three-year-old is, is very distressing. I know to think about what that's going to do to, to our son. You know, we can live through the construction during the day. We understand that's going to happen. But as far as the mitigation of the noise, it's a matter of, even the trucks that sit and they idle, they start around 6:00 a.m. or so, even when the pilings were starting at 7:30, they would come and they would sit in front of our home. And, excuse me. So it's, you know, yes, they were mitigating the noise. They weren't starting work. They were sitting with, with large trucks idling. It's still very incredibly loud to have those trucks come and sit in front of our home. So it's, it's not, is it going to be loud? Is it going to, to cause a disturbance in sleep? Is it going to mess with our family? We're sure it is, because we've, we've dealt with the trucks for the last, you know, since August when they started. And so I just would ask that you would hold the ordinances in place and, and not change them. And I won't duplicate everything else everyone said, but just another, another face and another person that's going to be affected by this. And I, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Evening. I'll keep it brief because it's dinner time. Chad Anderson, 6 Edgewater Alley. I'm a Wild Dunes resident. Our property sits right in between 51st and 52nd on Palm Boulevard. So I'll concur with kind of what everyone's been talking about from kind of a concern around the night ordinance. So I would just reiterate that, and we'll kind of keep it at that other than know that my bedroom is literally sitting on Palm, so I, I get it. The, the second thing that I wanted to bring to the council was to kind of consider installing crosswalks up and down Palm Boulevard from 41st to 56th along the beach access paths. There's a tremendous volume of children and visitors and just local adults that are using the beach access and have to cross what is becoming a very, very busy Palm Boulevard. So it's kind of a second piece of the, the conversation, but if you would please consider that in your thinking as well. And I thank you very much. Thank you for your service, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Very much. Anyone else?
Julie, can I, I forgot one issue. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Douglas is here. That's what we mind.
Property lines on ocean side of Palm Boulevard. I've heard that it goes to the palmetto trees, palm trees. I've talked to my neighbors. They say the fences that they have erected, is their property line? So calling dispatch once again, oh, that palmetto tree is the property line. That's not true. So once again, if, if the council, the police department, Douglas Department could identify the ocean side of Palm Boulevard from 21st to 41st, their property lines. And what that has to do with a ticket or not with that palmetto tree, I don't understand it. And I don't think the police department understands it. So that's, that's a big issue. I, I'll go dig up some markers if I have to. And I've asked people, Douglas sent me an email. I haven't had a chance to, to look at it yet. But maybe Douglas could interject right here if he, if he has the time?
No, not right now.
Okay. Well, please look into that. Douglas, please look into that for me.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Carol Willingham, and my address is 2 Fairway Village Lane. I had not planned to say anything, but I would like to just agree with the folks who are disputing why it makes sense to change an ordinance about the noise. Even more than that, I think it's critically important that if you do decide to change the ordinance, accountability has got to be spelled out. We were told when the project started in, in Wild Dunes that all the employees would park at the Citadel, and they would be shuttled in. It was brought to the attention of Lowe at the May Rec Center meeting that people were not doing that, and they said, "Oh, really? We didn't know." And it seems to me, if you're providing a shuttle, you would know whether anybody is riding it or not. This morning, I rode down Palm Boulevard. There were 40 cars from about 54th. So that's not many blocks. And at 10:15 this morning, I don't think it was beachgoers. So accountability matters. We want to trust. We want to enjoy the new property. But a lot of us have felt a little bit betrayed.
Thank you.
Julie Eddy, 456th Avenue. I just want to concur with all those who spoke against changing the ordinance. We have an ordinance in place. We built our home three years ago, followed all the ordinances. My husband still works every day. Next-door neighbor, excuse me, is a doctor at the VA Hospital. He's up and out by 6 every morning. It's just, you know, I don't think we can deal with that kind of noise. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Caroline Bradder. I'm here representing the Coastal Conservation League. My address is 131 Spring Street. I want to just speak really quickly about the consideration that you guys have before you about including the single-use plastics that you have in your point-of-sale ban and a prohibition on the beach. The Coastal Conservation League is wholeheartedly in support of incorporating that on Folly Beach and Sullivan's. You know, enforcement has not been a super-big issue because it's mostly an education opportunity, and the Isle of Palms is so primed for that, being the leader in our state on looking at plastics. So just wanted to let you guys know, we will help any way that we can, and we are fully in support of what you all are considering. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I want to say ditto, ditto, and ditto again. I know that you all were here last week when I spoke at Ways and Means Committee in strong opposition to this nighttime debacle that was proposed. And so I'm not going to waste your time repeating what's already recorded in, in the minutes. I just want to emphasize one more time that the ordinances that are in place to protect the quality of life of residents of the Isle of Palms should always be rigorously enforced. The, no exemption should be granted as there is not only the impact of the immediate situation, but the impact that would be caused by setting a bad precedent for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Doug Conrad, 27 Grand Pavilion. I just want to concur with the people in opposition to changing the noise ordinance.
Thanks, Doug. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Thank you all for bearing with me. Everybody needs to be heard.
Hi, I'm Lauren Johnson at 4 Grand Pavilion. And I concur as well. And if y'all haven't been convinced at all, I'm happy to get a petition. Because I know there's a lot of people that feel the same way about the trucks that couldn't come today. So if you need a petition, if you need more people, let me know. Do you need more people? Is there anything I can do personally? Because it isn't fair, you know, to just not let people sleep and let some big corporation get away with taking away our quality of life. And if y'all have been out there, it's starting to look, starting to feel Myrtle Beachy. And it's going to continue with this big hotel. And I won't go into all that, but we do like sleeping at night, so, you know, please let me know. Can you tell me now, would you guys need a petition?
You'll get an answer.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Can you mention one more thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Safety issue, not with that, but everyone else is talking about.
We already talked about that. On Palm Boulevard, we have crossing for pedestrians. Coming down today, people are standing there and people both ways just zip right through. We've got to have police protection up there. Let the police know or let somebody sit around there and stop these people. Many times I will come to it, I stop and I'm putting my hand out, you know, the people are there, ready to cross. We need to be a little more aggressive in stopping these people that don't understand. It's the same way in Wild Dunes on Palmetto Boulevard. We've got crossing there. I've got three of them right by my corner. And people just go through it. So we've got to watch out. Someone is going to get hurt. And it's going to be whose fault, don't know. But thank you. Thanks, Jerry. Anyone else? Hearing none, we're going to move on to our, oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Mike Mansager with Lowe, the developer of the new hotel at Wild Dunes. First off, we want to apologize for the disruption the major construction project is causing the Isle of Palms. It's a significant undertaking which involves many workers, equipment, and materials that all pass through Isle of Palms and most specifically, all the way down Palm Boulevard. In April, we met with the city staff to discuss the issue of nighttime pours for some of the major concrete pours on the new project, based upon the recommendation from our general contractor, B.L. Harbor, and their concrete subcontractor on the project. We discussed the impact of the large concrete pours related to the number of trucks, limited time to dispatch the load, and the traffic concerns on Palm Boulevard and its impact on public safety. We brought this topic forward because of its potential traffic impact to first responder access as well, and specifically, public safety. The regular communications we have with the Fire Department and the Police Department are excellent, and we commend them on their efforts and making themselves a part of the process to get the hotel constructed in the safest manner for all the island residents. Specific to the night pours, we brought this topic to the Public Safety Committee after garnering support of the Fire Department and the Police Department that this would be a beneficial alternative to the overall public safety of the island residents. We recognized there would also be concerns expressed from the community at large, and therefore, with the guidance from the city, coordinated a public forum presentation that was held on May 16th. We still believe the 30 or so night pours over the course of the next 10 months presents the best solution in terms of assuring public safety and minimizing traffic impacts. There have been some comments within the social media community that misrepresent the facts. To clarify, we are cresting approval for 35 night pours over the next 10 months. These would occur from 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. During this time, trucks would come over the connector down Palm Boulevard to the construction entrance of the new hotel. They will drive forward through a loop drive on the construction site, greatly reducing the need for backup alarms to sound. Regardless of the decision regarding the night pours, we remain committed to fully cooperate with the city and communicate with the residents of Isle of Palm the potential impacts of the construction activity, and we will continue to work to minimize these potential impacts. Thanks.
Okay, I think that was it. Is there anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to our regular schedule.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, go ahead and make a motion to reschedule the agenda and bring this item four out of my Public Safety Committee report and have a vote on it?
Yes, sir.
If that is a motion?
Say it. All those in favor, rescheduling the agenda?
Suspend the rules of order.
Suspend the rules of orders?
Suspend the rule of orders. Say aye? Aye. And nays? Ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, we had, as presented, this was presented to a Public Safety Committee. At that time, there were no citizens' comments and nobody was at the meeting to speak against it or speak for it. We knew that Lowe had, was scheduling a forum at the Rec Center, and which they did. Based on that, we went through and moved this forward to this full committee because of citizens' comments, and we wanted to go through and make sure everybody had a voice in it, whether one way or another, whether it was for or against. But at this motion, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that the city not approve the night pours and continue to sustain our ordinances as regular.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
A few questions. Did the committee, Ryan, talk about an exception to the ordinance, not changing the ordinance itself? I think that's important that everyone understand that, if that's accurate.
Well, it would be an exception to the ordinance. Basically, it's being a special exception, and that's what the, correct?
But it's not changing the ordinance. So our current ordinances would stay in place. This is but an exception. Terms of precedent-setting, I understand that this happened in a previous construction within Wild Dunes. Is that right? I believe there were some night traffic and night pours.
Yes.
You know, what we're dealing with, in addition to the safety matter, which is the top priority of an elected official, right, to ensure safety of our citizens first and our guests, and the question becomes, what's the alternative? And if it's not the night pour, it potentially is day pours, right, in July and August, our high season. Will we hear as many complaints and/or with more people on the roads and the pedestrian pathways, will there be greater safety issues? It's not an easy issue. I sympathize with every comment that was made here. We certainly want to take care of our citizens first, and I think safety has to trump everything.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a couple of comments to Ryan's point about the Public Safety Meeting. I think it had been mischaracterized as public safety recommending an approval. Procedurally, we needed to move it out of public safety for the public forum and to get before this full body. Just a couple of comments, and I've given a lot of thought. I was unable to attend the forum because I was at a funeral, but I did listen to it. And I listened to it again last night. My big issue, if you're really concerned about the residents and public safety as a corporation, you wouldn't build and do the pours in the height of our season, right? If I look at that schedule, the major activity is during the first several months with seven events per night, 35, 40 trucks, July, August, September. If you really were concerned about the community, that schedule would slide three months and it would put the two-event evenings frankly before the next season starts. So when I work backwards, and I tend to work backwards, you look at it and you go, well, this is about hitting a date that you want to hit to be able to open the hotel. And I got to say, that's not our issue. Our issue is safety during the season. I do concur with Councilman next to me, Mr. Kinghorn. However, you know, asking us to change something, to modify, and it's not a change in the ordinance. It's an exception. The next question is, how many more of these are we going to have, right? We don't know. I mean, we didn't know about this one until May. This hotel has been planned for a long time. In fact, it was approved under the PRD in 1977. This council didn't approve the hotel, right? So now we have to live with the fact that it's going to be built. But what we can't do is as a council and nine members vote for something last year that we worked hard to approve, and the first thing we do is go, well, we'll just create an exception. Because I think there's many other corporations, many other builders on this island that would love to come to us and have exceptions to get their project schedules on time. And frankly, that's all I've got to say.
Mr. Moore?
That's what I was going to say. Yeah, I wanted to say it first.
You're a smart guy.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I agree. And I also have special concern about us falling back on exemptions for special event status. I do not believe that is the correct use of our special exemptions and would like to see other solutions.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wondering with the whole team here if there is any other options. You know, I don't think that this works for anybody, the nighttime. So I'm just wondering, what are some other options? So while y'all are here, I'm just wondering if that's something that could be addressed. I mean, there has to be something else we can do.
Excuse me. I think that's Lowe's figure out.
And if they want to bring it back?
Right. All we're doing is saying we're going to grab any.
But we don't want it to be a public safety issue either. I mean, but there's got to be a third, you know?
Well, the question is, are we going to grant an exception or not? That's the question.
My name is Dan Batista. I am with Lowe. The answer to that question is, I'm sure there may be. Our biggest concern is the public safety. That's why we brought it to the city in the first place, and that's why we went to the Public Safety Committee. So we'd be more than happy to discuss it if there's other options. At this point, the other option would be, right now, just do it in the daytime, which is what I'm hearing is what everyone is suggesting. So other than that, you know, to me, this is a function of what this governing body wants to decide with respect to public safety. But we would be open to discuss other alternatives.
I'd like to say one thing. You know, Dan and your team, I want to thank y'all for at least trying to work with the city. However, I will say this past week, it's been nonstop texts, emails, telephone calls from our residents, and that's who we have to respond to. So I just wanted to kind of let you know that we have a lot of pressure on us from different directions. Any other comments?
Yeah, have the motion, please, read.
We'll hear it a second time.
Yeah, I'd like to, what's listed in our agenda is pretty open-ended, from July 19 through April 20. I would think to Carol's point, there could be a compromise where we limit the night pours to, this year, increase the time rather than 2:00 to 4:00.
Let's, can we go back to the motion?
And I'd like to finish, please. And because what you're going to have, as sure as I sit here, for those of you that vote in favor of not any compromise, not trying to balance this out between daytime traffic and safety and nighttime, we're going to hear some legitimate complaints about daytime traffic. Think about the incidents we've had, not the least of which was this weekend. And when traffic backs up and it gets congested and worse, we're all going to hear about it.
Okay, the motion again, please?
The motion is to deny the request for special exemption.
Okay. All those in favor of denying the exemption signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Nay. Eight to one.
Mr. Mayor, we would be happy to work. And we'd be, I mean, Public Safety Committee will be happy to work with Lowe at Wild Dunes and continue to work with this, anything else that they need to do, whether it's with the police, fire, and routing as well.
Thank you for saying that. Okay, let's go back to our regularly scheduled program of Ways and Means.
Mr. Mayor, I have to use a bathroom.
Yes, sir.
You asked Norma Jean to make it a little warmer. She can do it.
Can we bring this back? Mr. Chairman, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ways and Means Committee met at 5:00 Tuesday, May 21st. Call for water, please.
Thank y'all. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. It's called to order at 5:00 Tuesday, May 21st, a week ago. We had citizens' comments. You've heard from most of those citizens again tonight expressing concerns over the Wild Dune project. Get ready to financial report. The April financial statements, general fund revenues were 81% of budget and general fund expenditures were at 76% of budget. According to the treasurer, the general fund is forecasted to end the year $1,200,000 ahead of budget. The major contributors to the net positive result are business licenses, building permits, and parking fees. The lower-than-expected forecast for expenditures can be attributed to vacancies in City Hall, the Police Department, and the Public Works Department. Tourism funds were tracking, as expected, in the last couple of months of the year, expected to be high-income impact months for tourism revenues. If you look at the schedule, it's only tracking, it's tracking like anywhere between 69% and 75%. But that's through April, when, you know, the budget ends in June 30th, so we got two big months coming up. The city treasurer and I had a conversation about it, and she's real confident we're going to make budget or even go higher as far as those revenues go. Local auction sales tax are running at 4.3% at the same period of fiscal year 18. Project worksheet, space to drainage project is nearing completion with $429,000 remaining to be spent. The removal, replacement of the underground storage tanks is running past its completion date, and the city will be seeking liquidated damages from the contractor. But I was up at Marina this weekend and again this morning, and they have gas, finally. They're selling gas. As far as cash balances at 4/30 of 2019 versus April 30 of 2018, and total all cash at April 30th, 19, is $18,498,000. And this time last year was $18,209,000, excuse me. So percentage of general fund expenditures is 35% this year, 32% last year. We've rejected forecasted fund balances at the end of the year will be $17,861,000. We did, we had another budget worksheet, work session that we thought was pretty productive. Some people still have some concerns, so we're not going to rush it. We're going to make the budget on time. Without question, we're going to have another budget workshop designated area. And I spoke this morning, the second week of June, and we're looking at these major funds, projects we've got coming up, which is the repairs on the public safety building, the Marina docks, and the drainage projects. With that, it's my report, and I'll let you handle the motions.
We have some action items. Recommendation from Real Property Committee to approve a proposal from ATM in the amount of $68,000 to expand the scope of work to develop a plan for the inclusion of dock areas referred to as areas BNC. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it, unanimous? Number two, recommendation from Real Property Committee to award a contract to Coastal Number two, recommendation from Real Property Committee to award a contract to Coastal Science and Engineering for 2019-02, island-wide beach monitoring in the amount of $30,520 per year for three years.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Passage unanimous? Consideration of an award of a one-year contract to Technology Solutions in the amount of $40,000 for citywide IT management and support services. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Unanimous? Recommendation from ATACX Committee, sponsorship of Carolina Coast Surf Club website in amount of $1,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it, unanimous? And sponsorship of South Carolina Quorum 2019 Turtle Track in amount of $10,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those that signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nays? Unanimous? All the way through. And that ended your report.
Well done.
Wow. Public safety. Ryan, get back up.
Perfect, thanks, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met Monday, May 6. Everybody was in attendance. We had multiple citizens' comments, Susan Page, George Page, Becky Harris, Dick Velvay, all from Forest Trail Court concerning what George had talked about earlier, our dilapidated structures. And obviously, it's an issue that we're trying to wrap our hands around with trying to enforce, try to find an ordinance which we can enforce to alleviate some of these problems. I believe we have found some state law that we can work with. The city attorney's been working on it with the administrator on bringing it forward to bring it into ordinance form. We also had consideration from Wild Dunes for their sanctioned pumping event. We have since handled that one. The... We had... Dilapidated structures. We had an update on our... Did you have some? We had an update on our public transit initiative. We're continuing to work with COG and SC DOT, and it's on the DOT May agenda when they expect to get approval for the purchase of the vans. Basically, what this is, is a carpool back and forth. What the vans' primary use will be to transport employees from Wild Dunes and the Marina from Mount Pleasant over here to the island.
A quick update. SC DOT and the COG had a meeting today. Unfortunately, SC DOT takes a summer break for their meetings, and they've had some staff turnover, and that's a reason why they didn't make it to their main agenda.
Right.
So we're working on different alternatives to see if we can speed up the purchase of those vans. Our goal, initial goal, was to have that program rolled out by this past weekend. Clearly, that didn't happen. But it's still on their agenda. It's still a priority for us, and we continue to work with them to try to make sure that that project is in place soon.
Thank you. As always, we continue to have discussion of Coyote Management. We're still trapping. We're working with Wild Dunes Community Association Board. We're looking, working with Lowe Wild Dunes, working with South Carolina Department Natural Resources, Jay Buffalovsky, Buffalovsky? And also a professor from Ori Georgetown Technic College, James Westerholt. We're trying to pull in as much knowledge and information as we can to try to solve this problem and taking those experiences from everybody who's dealt with it. We also had discussion about consideration for a film permit. It's also on the agenda later on tonight. We're trying to streamline the approval process for small, obtrusive film and video or still photography shoots, shots on the beach or on the island. The permit application should be permitted within, with a minimum of 14-day notice. The project would need to carry a city's established limit for liability insurance and be city-named additionally insured. And the permits, the permit would have a processing fee, but the fee could increase based on the project's need for city services. We'll have that later on. We continue to work on our budget. And then we also had a proclamation for a National Safe Boating Week, which was this past May 18th through the 24th. That was basically it. The biggest event was the Wild Dunes Pour.
Okay.
But that was another one, didn't it?
Questions?
Yes, I'd like the committee, Ryan, to look into a couple things in the future. One, based upon the conversation we just had, not only continue to engage with Lowe and how we deal with the construction activity, but monitor the traffic and the safety on Palm Boulevard. Secondly, if you would look into a camera at Breach Inlet for safety concerns. It's a fairly regular event. I'd say every 16 months or so, we have a death out there. There are other incidences. We have cameras elsewhere on the island. It would seem to me a camera on the bridge, keeping an eye on Breach Inlet, as we do with police and other locations, is worth looking into. And then finally, based on the comment that was mentioned this evening, a bike path on all of Palm Boulevard. And as you know, dealing with SC DOT takes a great deal of time. Perhaps, Carol, this is something that Public Works Committee needs to look at as well. We added the bike lane, as you all know, on this portion of Palm Boulevard. It took a number of years. It's a real safety issue. It would help transportation. And if you think about it, the rest of Palm, where we now put the white stripe in the season, if that was to be extended to a bike lane, that would push the traffic, the parking back further, and would give everybody a little bit of a buffer. It would be good visual. I think there's a lot of positives. So if your committee were looking at those things, I appreciate it.
And are you talking about, like, a traffic cam to watch the bridge or a camera for the water itself?
Camera on the water.
Okay.
So when the police are monitoring anyway, and they have about six places that they monitor, this would just be an additional one, I would think it wouldn't be that expensive. Perhaps it could be in something in conjunction with Sullivan's Island. But that, as well as some active safety measures there, if somebody gets in trouble, there isn't even a ring buoy that they could throw out to help save somebody. Pretty minor, shouldn't be very costly, and if we can save a life, I think it's well worth our taking the initiative. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the dilapidated houses, will you just sort of keep us up to date on how that's progressing?
Yes.
And I do know I've gotten a lot of complaints from people that live around those homes, and rightly so.
Yeah, no, it is. It's on our... It's a priority for us.
Okay, so it'll stay on the agenda.
Yes, no, it's... Hopefully, we'll have resolution, you know, this next meeting and be able to move forward with an amendment or to our ordinances next month.
So end your report.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Public Works.
Me. Public Works Committee met 4:00 PM Tuesday, May 7. All committee members were present, as well as appropriate staff. Don Thompson and Bob Brown, both of Goat Island, spoke under citizens' comments. The resident of Goat Island, the residents of Goat Island are looking for a place to put a garbage dumpster for their garbage on the Isle of Palms. So we reordered the agenda to discuss this issue. And after much discussion, we asked Director Pitts and Interadministrator Fergazo to see if they could work toward a solution for this issue. So I will keep you all posted on if we were able to find a spot that would work for everybody. Under Department Report, Director Pitts, he reported that miscellaneous garbage is up from spring cleaning, and mowing continues regularly at the Front Beach Lots and on 41st. The Moby Mat at Front Beach has been a challenge, especially with this very dry weather. It boughs and bows, I'm sorry. Not boughs, bows, with the soft sand, but the crew is working to keep it flat. So just know that we are aware of the problem and trying to keep it flat. It really is a challenge. Hazardous Recycle Day and Tread Day were a big success at the end of April. Always a really good event. Under Phase 2 Drainage, it is complete, and that is just awesome. And the contingency funds will roll into Phase 3 Drainage. So just keeping it flowing. And Public Works Workshop improvements, such a much-needed repair. I hope you all have gone over there and looked at how wonderful, it's just such an improvement. But I hate to say that the air conditioning is not working over there, but it is scheduled for a repair, and this is just not at all cool. But, um...
Oh.
Ooh. But anyway, that's a problem, given that it's been over 100 degrees the last four days, right? So if there is not one problem, it's another, right? I mean, you never get everything just going smoothly, but we're trying. Update on ditches and drainage issues. Forest Trail marginal road underground pipe has been replaced, and the gate valve was installed, so it's been resurfaced, and that's all good. I was served a petition from the residents of Forest Trail and Sparrow Drive with 45 signatures requesting a flood abatement solution for their area. And it has been appropriate conveyed, appropriately conveyed to the mayor and is on the agenda tonight. But we are aware of the lack of drainage infrastructure in the area, and that is certainly noted, and we are aware of it, and it is on the agenda. So just wanna recognize that. Then we discussed comprehensive sewer implementation. And Cincy Water and Sewer Master Plan is complete. We believe it is time to revisit the ordinances we deferred regarding the implementation of island-wide sewer hookups. These are ordinance numbers 2017-08, 2017-09, and 2017-10. They basically look at lots that are subdivided and requiring that they be connected to public sewer. Lots that have substantial, new construction or substantial improvements should be connected to sewer where there's a public sewer line within 150 feet. And then if, when a, where a public sewer line is available upon the sale or transfer of a property, requiring public sewer. So I am looking to make a motion that these people put back on our city agenda for consideration. So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion. This did pass unanimously at Public Works, and these were ordinances that the Planning Commission worked on for months and months. And so I would like to talk about that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Question. As far as the provision of the property transferring, that was something I specifically put in there, in that I wanted to protect our residents that are on fixed incomes, and I wanted to protect estates. So like if, you know, like if someone to pass away and they want to will the property to their family, anybody that's, you know, interested party, not a third-party transaction, they'd be exempt. Is that correct?
Right, so...
Okay.
Ordinance Court, where a public sewer line is available upon the sale or transfer of a property.
Right, right.
I'd have to, we'd probably have to get Douglas. This was again in 2017, so...
Right, but that was my intent back then.
Yeah, I just feel like we need to, now that the master plan has been given to us, we had said that we would revisit these ordinances after that time, so...
Right. Julia, are you familiar with these ordinances?
I'm not, but I can certainly anticipate myself.
But you heard my concern?
Yes.
A minute ago.
I did. We staff has been meeting with the Water and Sewer Commission staff. They have been working on replacing their long-term attorney. We've been allowing some time for them to get us to speed with these ordinances, like you said, were deferred indefinitely back in 2017. And the, I think the intention of the committee was to, for staff to go back and see what their feedback was. We submitted those ordinances to the Water and Sewer Commission, and we're still waiting for some feedback and comments and recommendations from their end. Hopefully, that happens this week. We have a meeting with them scheduled early on Friday, and we can report back to the committee on their thoughts on those three ordinances in particular.
Okay, I just felt like we should really resuscitate them.
Mr. Moore.
I have two, I guess, concerns with these ordinances, if I'm recalling them correctly. One was the definition of where sewer is accessible. I believe it was something like 150 feet or something like that, which the burden, the expense, the burden of the expense would be on whichever person was building or purchasing the home. And this issue was near and dear to me, because when we built our home, the nearest sewer was within 200 feet, just that much farther. And we're talking six figures to be able to put in sewer. And I would have loved to connect to sewer, had it been accessible. I did not consider 200 feet. I know that's different. I don't think I consider 150 feet accessible either. My other concern is that when these ordinances were surfaced, and we discussed with the Water and Sewer Commission, what surfaced for me and what I hoped the master plan would address, and I'll admit a little bit of ignorance here on whether or not it addresses, the concern was that there were a lot of piecemeal connections going on to the system that were not necessarily done in accordance with what would be a more cohesive sewer system working all together. And I just want to ensure that if we're putting these ordinances in place, that we're not perpetuating that type of mentality versus something that's more consistent with what the master plan is, that presumably we'll have everything flowing more fluidly.
Mr. Mayor?
Carol.
So I'm going back on memory as well, because this was kind of an early last year. The issues I recall were, we don't have a solid enough plan of what's there. There was no flow in that comment area. Where when we asked the questions about, you know, what would it cost for an individual home, it was, we won't really know till we get into the work and understand that, which I think gave us big pause at that time. The second issue was that person that's three houses in, as we had a resident come forward, and they lay the primary all the way out to the sewer, the neighbors can tap in for a fraction of what that person has paid. You know, I would just ask that we look at a way of equitably distributing so that if somebody does want a subsequent tap-in, that they're not taking advantage of that person who, as John suggested, you know, paid the six-figure number to connect to the sewer system. So I think, I'm totally in support, by the way, of looking at this again. I think we're smarter now that we've had another year to look at this, but we're still going to hit some issues that are gonna give us great pause.
Yes.
Point of clarification, not only did the Planning Commission Committee look at this issue, but they recommended it to us.
Right.
In terms of cost and connectivity issues, of course, that's an issue that has to be dealt with by the Water and Sewer Commission. I can tell you, there's an example right now, maybe the only one on the island, taking place on Merritt Boulevard, and there are either four or six families that have come together, and they share that burden.
That's right.
But they all know that being so near the creek, it's the right thing to do environmentally, and it's gonna increase their property values.
And that's what Randy was referring to, is sharing that cost.
It's gotta be a way.
Okay.
Let me keep going here. So again, our goal was to start this conversation. Oh, oh, we did, I'm sorry.
So motion is second. And for those three items, and we go back to them one more time.
Marie, do you want to read the motion again?
I'm sorry.
Oh, you want me to read them again?
The three...
I'll read them again.
Yes, please.
Okay. Right, so ordinance, ordinance 2017-08 requires that all subdivisions of lots be connected to the public sewer system, and to require certain information related to sewer connection for the subdivision approval process. Ordinance 2017-09 is, provides that all new construction or substantial improvement shall be connected to a public sewer system where a public sewer line is located within 150 feet, and to reduce the lot coverage requirements and floor area ratio for lots with septic systems. And ordinance 2017-10 is a mandatory, requires mandatory connection to public sewer system where public sewer line is available upon the sale or transfer of property.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, we have discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Okay.
Eight, one.
And we still continue to request a joint meeting with Isle of Palms Water and Sewer Commission. I just want to say that is something we really are looking forward to at some point. We discussed the ordinance prohibiting single-use plastic bags, plastic straws, and styrofoam products on the beach. Councilmember Smith added balloons, and the motion passed unanimously, and this ordinance is on the agenda this evening. And this ordinance is on the agenda this evening. We continue to discuss the implementing of a smoking ban on the beach. This is requiring further research on how other beach communities are enforcing it and there is definitely more to come on this issue in the future. We discussed the budget to include the funds from hospitality taxes to improve the Waterway Boulevard multi-use path. Under new business, we will be requesting funding from the Charleston County Transportation Committee for the Waterway Boulevard multi-use path. And I would like to make a motion that the city's number-one priority for the CTC funding is the construction of improvements to the Waterway Boulevard multi-use path.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? One quick question, I guess Desiree, that's for you. This does not interfere with the sidewalk coming off the bridge connector.
No.
Okay.
That's a separate project.
Completely separate, alright.
And we'll look forward to this.
Thank you for clarification. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous.
Okay. I'm still not done. Sorry. I know. SC DOT extended the sidewalk on Forty-first and for that, we are very grateful. It looks wonderful. And best news of all, after June third, two times a week garbage pickup starts and weekly recycling pickup on Wednesday will start after June third as well. So that ends my report. So our next meeting is Thursday, June sixth at nine a.m.
And we have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know?
Know what?
Just being current.
Our meeting? Oh.
It is.
Oh, geez.
It's moved it to four o'clock.
Whatever Donnie says is right.
Donnie's right.
Okay.
I wouldn't doubt Donnie.
Right.
Quick question.
Yes, sorry.
Are you familiar with the golf cart path running from, across the street from the Lutheran Center on Twenty-first, parallel to Twenty-first? That golf cart path?
Mm-hmm.
That, that's parallel to Twenty-first and beachside behind it, on the left? If you're heading.
On the left? No, I've not been on that.
Okay. There is a golf cart path there.
Okay.
Okay. It has a lot of traffic because of the recent.
On the beach side?
No, it's on, it's parallel to Twenty-first.
Okay.
It's like, the Lutheran Center's here.
On the picket fence.
And then across the street.
Yeah.
There's a golf cart path and then, as Ryan said, yes, there's.
Yes, I do know. Right, okay.
Is this Carmen Arvage?
Is that DOT property or our property or who does that belong to?
It's DOT.
I think it's DOT and we received an encroachment permit to build that path.
Right.
So who is responsible for maintaining it?
You're talking about Carmen Arvage path.
I'm talking about, you know, I'm talking about Carmen Arvage or?
No.
No, I'm talking about Twenty-first Avenue. I told you about this, this morning.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about the Carmen Arvage.
No, no, that's a whole nother issue. That, that's fine. That one's fine. But a lot of people used a one from Twenty, on Twenty-first Avenue.
Correct.
That, does everybody know where I'm talking about?
Yes. Very sandy.
It's very sandy, there's no rain, and people are getting stuck, especially this weekend, a lot. And I was just wondering, whose responsibility is to maintain that? Because it's either we need to maintain it or we need to shut it down.
It's not a golf cart.
Public safety.
Correct. Correct. It is, it is not a golf cart path. It is, we were, the city was able to, was granted an encroachment permit by SC DOT to put a golf cart path along Palm Boulevard on the, on the, between, yeah, to the grocery store. The other side is still DOT. We do not have an encroachment permit for traffic on there. Right now, it's, right now, it's illegal to drive a golf cart in that area, but it is, people still drive in that area. You can cross Palm Boulevard, but you can't drive alongside of it unless there is an encroachment permit. We can take it up within public safety to try to extend that encroachment permit that we have on the opposite side of the street, to, to the opposite side, to where we can go through and maintain and utilize that area as well as, like we had the other side as well.
That would be good. There's a lot of people that use it.
Correct.
Heavily traveled.
Correct.
Heavily traveled. Yes, ma'am.
Did you say, is that technically Twenty-first Avenue or Palm?
It's Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
The curve.
So it's maybe, do different rules apply to it?
No.
No.
We'll, we'll take it up under our committee and try to get that encroachment permit.
Okay. Any other questions here or none? And we got the date correct?
June fifth at four.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Recreation.
Well, I've got a question for you.
Okay.
So, I mean, you have, so we've taken, it's, it's interesting. I'm just wondering how far this will go. So we've taken up the prohibition of plastic and styrofoam at point-of-sale as well and taken it up. Now, we're gonna move forward and take it up as possession of and on the beach, okay?
Drop the plastic bag.
Correct. So, so we have that. And then discussion of smoking on the beach, possession of, will you backtrack into eliminating it at point-of-sale as well?
I don't think that we have. I, I certainly don't believe we have.
That's not on the agenda tonight.
I know. No, I was just wondering what, what the committee's take was on it.
Well, I think the, smoking is different than banning cigarettes. Banning smoking is different than banning cigarettes.
Okay. Let's bring that up another time. Recreation.
All right. The Recreation Committee met on Monday, May sixth with all members present and all appropriate staff present. We received a report from Recreation Director Norah Jean Page. I'll just touch on a few of the highlights. Pickleball is on at the Rec Center now. And we'll be, we are moving into a new phase with summer. We're going into our summer camps and changing things up a little bit. New programs coming up for the fall are, include Handling Social Media with Confidence and Grace for eleven-to-twelve-year-old girls and Kids Planet Earth. Let's see. We talked about camp registration, which is something that is a work in progress. We tried something new this year on having, moving registration to Saturday and had some mixed feedback on that. And we are continuing discussions about how we might make that system better. Let's see. Also, Easter egg hunt was a huge success. However, we recognize that there were some issues with parking problems that I believe the Public Safety Committee will be looking at or has been looking at more closely. And music in the park was a little bit low attended, but still a good event. Sand sculpting is coming up on Saturday, June first. That's very soon. There's also on Wednesday, June fifth, something I don't believe we've done recently, is the U.S. Air Force Heritage of America band Wins will perform outside at the Rec Center. We also have events, the IOP Beach Run is coming up on July twenty-seventh. The Half-Rover Tournament is August seventeenth. We are sad to see Recreation Supervisor Weston Smith will be moving for a job in his hometown in North Carolina. And we hope to get that position filled quickly. One interesting thing that the director brought to us was a suggestion that the Rec Center consider creating a special path with bricks that could be a way for people to memorialize loved ones. We'll be looking more at that, I believe. We talked about, once again, surfing instructions on the beach and that is also a work in progress that we will be continuing to look at this year. Update on the 2019 Isle of Palms Farmers Market. We are moving that to, it's still going to be in September and October, but it will be on Wednesdays from three to seven P.M. And I think we've already discussed that it's moving over to the Recreation Department and will be on the side of the street by the, by Twenty-seventh. And the fields over on that side. And somewhat downsized. Otherwise, we looked at the budget and really didn't have any major changes. We will be meeting again, when is our next meeting? I don't see that. We'll be meeting again in June. And here in.
I think if we're meeting in June, the committee made the decision last week.
Oh, that, we are not meeting in June.
Yeah, meeting in July.
That's right. We are skipping June.
Okay. Any questions for Recreation? Hearing none, movement on. Personnel.
All right. Personnel, we had a regular committee meeting on Tuesday, May the seventh, as well as some special meetings for interviews and a special meeting just before council tonight, which did include making us tardy. Apologies for that. I'll start with the regular committee meeting. All, all committee members and appropriate staff were in attendance. We approved the previous meeting minutes, no citizen comments. We discussed the process, excuse me, the updates for the hiring of the City Administrator and Assistant Public Works Director. I'm gonna skip that because we'll address it with the special meetings. And I don't have the latest update on the Assistant Public Works Director. Have we made an offer?
We'll be making an offer this week.
Okay. So we have a final candidate and we'll be making an offer soon. So there's your update, real time. We received, we discussed the status of boards and commissions and the selection process and the tenure for those positions. City staff made some presentations of recommendations to us, which we asked to be sent to the committees and boards themselves. We felt like they would be the best advisors on what length of term we should be providing for these, these boards and commissions. And just as a reminder, the reason why this was on the agenda is because right now, you basically get a life sentence if you agree to join a board and we wanted to put some more structure and expectation around what people are doing when they commit.
I didn't want to rephrase that.
I think it's, I think it's appropriately phrased. We, we talked a little bit more about the strategic, the strategic planning process and we did have to increase the budget by five thousand dollars to make sure that we're doing it right. But we're excited about the progress of that process coming up in the fall. And that was the biggest major budget discussion, I think. So that was essentially the regular meeting. And I'd like to give the update on the hiring process for the City Administrator by starting with a recap of the process that we undertook to get to where we are today, also so that you'll keep listening to me for a little bit longer before I make my recommendation from the Personnel Committee. We started with contracting a nationally-renowned recruiting agency to source us the best candidates that were interested in this position across the country. And so we had folks from all over, from almost any state you can imagine, applying for this position. Oddly enough, people want to come live on Isle of Palms or work near Isle of Palms. And so we had a lot of applicants, just as we did for the Chief of Police. We took those applicants and we put them through a pre-employment assessment process that is scientifically proven to predict talent and to tell, to predict who's gonna be a top performer in a specific job. So that whittled us down a little bit more. From there, our Vice Chair and our H.R. Officer conducted phone screening and helped us whittle down our list of candidates to four finalists. We took those four finalists and the Personnel Committee conducted structured interviews where we scored and ranked the candidates. And from there, we were able to identify three finalists. The three finalists were interviewed with a similar structured interview format by council and the council scored those interviews. And so we have a lot of data going into the selection. And as many of you probably know, our interim City Administrator was one of our final candidates. And I had people come to me over and over again saying, Desiree has earned this position. She's earned it, she's earned it, she's earned it. And I said, you know, I agree that she's earned it. But Councilmember Kinghorn made a very great point in a previous meeting that what we want to do is make sure that for Desiree's sake, for the city's sake, for our sake, that we're, we're hiring the person who is the most qualified after conducting a national search. And so we went through the entire process because we had sourced all of these candidates. And despite the fact that I agreed, we, she has earned this position, we wanted to make sure we were making a recommendation to hire the individual who was gonna be the most qualified that we think to lead the city in the future. And so the Personnel Committee would like to recommend that the city make an offer and enter negotiations to hire Desiree Ferguson as our City Administrator.
Second.
And I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Second. I'm sure we don't have a discussion on this. Oh, we do.
Yeah, of course, we do. I, I just want to say, I've hired a lot of people. I've also fired a lot of people in my career. And I think John Moy made a comment a while ago, you hire for potential, you don't just hire for what you have right now. I don't think, you know, I spent, and I'm driving Desiree crazy with the amount of time I spend at City Hall. And I gotta tell you, I've watched her step up and, and take on some of the toughest challenges this city has seen in an awful long time. The Marina's not easy, the Public Safety Building's not easy, these personnel issues are not easy.
Council's not easy.
And, and I'm not easy, right? And, and I gotta say, she's done it with grace, she's done it with a great attitude, she's done it with a smile on her face, and I couldn't be more proud to put my support behind Desiree.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank council for putting up with me since April fifteenth and the fact that you went through the process. Personally, I think the process, I heard the comment, personnel is wasting time and wasting money because we already have the votes. Desiree, you already have the votes. I couldn't agree with my council, my Personnel Committee at the previous meeting because I thought we had an opportunity to look at new ideas. Desiree, you're gonna do a great job. I'm sure you are. But I have to go against my council, my Personnel Committee.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I wish you luck.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just gonna say, I think Desiree's a rock star and I'm really looking forward to us getting on with it and seeing what, what the future holds.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay. Eight and one. So ends your report.
So everybody leaves.
Real property.
Real property, that's me. I, I fell asleep for a minute, I'm sorry. Anyway, the regular meeting, real property was held nine a.m. Wednesday, May first. All committee members were present. From comments from the, there were no citizens' comments, comments from the Marina tenants. Jay Clark had asked, I think you all know that we granted a one-year extension on the docks that were appended to Morgan Creek Grill. That ended at the end of May. So I think before the next Real Property Committee, we will also bring forward again our intent with that dock for the balance of the lease for the Morgan Creek Grill. A continuing subject from Jay was parking. A continuing answer from the city is we can't arbiter the parking situation in the Marina effectively, that it really does require cooperation amongst the Marina tenants. And that when you look at the clock and the calendar of where the busy portions are for each of those tenants, there ought to be a workable solution. And we've asked them once again to sit down nicely and try to work this out. Marina Manager Brian Barrigan reported that social media has been commenting on the resident launch rates and slip availability. And he'd like to clarify, and I've had calls, I think our mayor has had an experience of actually being charged non-resident fees. That was probably on purpose. But Brian wanted to clarify that the launch fees for residents are five dollars, contrary to what any of the Marina employees are saying, and that, yes, there is a fee for parking for residents. And as you recall, we went through this last year and his lease basically forces him the five-dollar fee for launch, but the lease does not cover the fact that he is allowed to charge for parking. So contrary to what we may or may wish to do, it is his call. We also had, he's, and this will come up again briefly, but concerned at the delays that we had in getting the gas tanks functional. They are functional now, but we also had concerns expressed as to the damages done to businesses down there. Michael Fem of Tider Wave reported that he had not received any correspondence from OCRM or the Army Corps of Engineers regarding the non-compliance on current permits. Not surprising because we were told that that would likely be ninety to a hundred and twenty days before we got any response. On old business, there was a presentation of the building assessment report on Morgan Creek Grill. That document had. That document has been made public. Just briefly, without going through a lot of detail, the building has a lot of issues. It's a 35-year-old building. Chip Crane of Hill Construction reported that our real options with the building are to consider raising the building, building a new one, trying to remedy the problems. The problems range from structural issues to ADA compliance issues, but, but the range of what we're looking at is two and a half million to $4 million. He did state also, because we have the 50% rule on what you're allowed to do to a building, that the building was likely not appraised in the $5 million range, which sort of gives us, you know, some concerns around whether or not repairing that building. That discussion, without going into more detail here, is a discussion that will continue in ways and means in the budgeting process with alternatives that we as council are looking at. And I could, I could speak longer than anyone would wish to listen on the Morgan Creek Grill. Update on removal and replacement underground storage tanks, it is complete. Council member Ward did indicate that there was liquidated damages clauses in that we went a total, I don't know, around 10 weeks, you know, weeks over the contract amount. And, and we're, we're looking at what those liquidated damages would mean and do intend to pursue them. Update on the marina docks rehabilitation project and consideration expanding the scope of work for ATM associated. So this is an item on the agenda for vote. And basically what has happened since we first started looking at these, we were looking at the docks as phased.
Go ahead.
We were looking at phased where we were doing the fuel dock and then three other sections. And ATM came back and said, honestly, we had a dock collapse recently. We don't know if it was boat wake or exactly what the cause was. But because of the condition of those docks, it was a recommendation that we move forward with for the permitting of all the docks. But the recommendation from ATM was that we consider doing all of the docks at once and frankly, figure out how to finance that, which again, is a ways and means consideration that we're also talking through the budget process. Do we want to make that motion during this? We did. We zipped through them so fast, I'm not used to this bam bam bam. That was the $68,000 that we approved in additional funding to look at it as an entire project. Moving forward. Council member Friends did ask, and I think it's a very legitimate question, how many major projects is the city considering at this point? And noted that council has worked hard to reduce the amount of ATX funds it's using because it is not a number that can be counted on year after year. So some of the consideration that we're talking about is when we look at things that are public use, both for residents and non-residents, how much of the ATX monies do we want to dedicate to projects, particularly when they require debt? Council member Ward noted, city has done nothing to refurbish or maintain the marina and the results have landed on this council. And I think we are all seeing the impact on that, both with Morgan Creek Grill building, public safety building, the docks, et cetera. So with that, there was update on the permitting process for existing tidal wave water sports dock. As I stated, nothing's been done and will not until frankly, we know the outcome of OCRM and the Army Corps of Engineer. Update on public safety building repairs project, that report has also been made public. Again, not a pretty report, but Trident is the company that we engaged to do the forensics on that. We got the results back and we are going through that process as well in ways and means in public safety. The status of agreed upon procedures for all marina tenants. That is a Jimmy Ward name for something of an audit. It's not an audit. I knew he was going to say that, so I beat him to it. The intention there was that we understand that revenues being generated by the marina should have agreed upon procedures by which we are able to measure their contribution to the city coffers. And I think Desiree received that report this week. A draft of the report this week. So we have not done anything with that report to date and we will discuss that report further in the next real property committee meeting. Discussion marina parking, I've already covered, I'm not going to cover that again. There is some concern when we look at the restaurant and how the shared parking arrangements work because of code and ordinance, should, should the building be raised? How large a building could we build? How many parking spaces have to be dedicated to what size restaurant? Those things will move forward as well, but they also tie into to our engagement with Lee and Associates on how we do the RFP. And the budget, we did not make any substantial changes to budget. Most of the items that are in the real property budget are major items that we are still having a lot of deliberation within the Ways and Means Committee for. New business was discussion of the use of breach inlet boat landing. It was suggested that we actually own a boat landing, which I didn't know, right next to Jimmy Carroll's property. And council member Ward politely told us, you guys are crazy. You're wasting your time. That's worthless. It's very dangerous. And we really don't have an asset that we can do anything with and that this subject comes up every X amount of years. And I truly believe him because I think we just killed it on the spot with those comments in the meeting.
What was the intent?
Well, it was, would we have a place to, that residents could potentially use, freeing them of the need or obligation to use the marina and, you know, cut down on the crowding and perhaps launch kayaks and other things. But, and councilman Ward, you can comment on that if you'd like to. But I think that idea had been proposed years back, way before my time and went nowhere then.
But it's the current policy that a resident can pay a fee and get a key and use it for a year. So we are currently making it available for residents. Did the committee consider, and the funds we received to that, the last time I checked, was about $1,500. So that means that 15 people or less are using it. Did the committee consider just opening it up and letting the community use it without a fee?
We did not. And I'm not, I don't have an opinion one way or the other. What I would ask is some advice on the liability of doing that before we, you know, open it up. Because, you know, with that comes some level of enforcement, you know, who's actually going to use it and already exposing ourselves. So I would just, we can look at this at the next real property committee meeting. But, but the reality is I would want an opinion from our attorney and city administration on this.
I'd ask that you look into it.
Okay.
Currently, residents and non-residents who are interested in using and paying that fee have to sign an agreement with the city and provide copy of insurance of up to $300,000.
I was going to say, hopefully a waiver.
Which is really dangerous. Unless we're generating significant revenue.
Understood.
Open it up and let people use it and it gives the residents particularly a break or just limit it to residents.
Or unless there's liability associated with it.
But you manage that.
Yeah, so we've already discussed the coastal science engineering RFP. And one thing that we will take up, and there is in the marina tenant leases some remediation for loss of use. And we know that we've had some loss of use. I don't think we have a clear answer on, you know, how to do the comparables year on year, just exactly how much business was lost as a result of the contracting delays. So city administration has been tasked to go back and look at that and, you know, come up with a reasonable plan that's least compliant and fair. And we did have a discussion of residential neighborhoods between 21st and 41st. Council member Ference asked that we send the issue of noise back to the planning commission. And the overall broader issue is residential neighborhoods are increasingly being encroached by short-term rentals with lots of noise. Instances were brought up where people coming back from parties at 4:00 in the morning. And that's certainly not the intention of SR1-zoned residential communities. So rather than try to resolve it at real property, we recommended to send it back to the planning commission to bring forward the set of ideas that we could implement and enforce and try to regain some quality of life and control over residential neighborhoods. Misslenous business, all tenants were current with the rent. There was no executive session needed. We adjourned the meeting and the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 5th at 9:00 AM.
Any questions?
Yes, Carol.
I do. And I may have missed this because we've had a lot of information. But what is the timeline for the restaurant RFP? People keep asking me and I'm confused on what the answer is.
We have a timeline. We did agree, I believe it was in the last meeting, Desiree, I have so many conversations, so please jump in. If, we did agree that instead of trying to do, we were going to issue an RFP and expect a 30-day response. Lee and Associates came back and said, I believe the appropriate response time would be more like 45 days. Working backwards, Desiree, please correct me.
I had a meeting with Lee and Associates last week and they should be submitting to me a draft of that RFP this week. The city will have a week to review that and make sure that it's consistent with the intent of the committee and of city council. And once we give some feedback and the RFP is complete, they'll be, they'll have 60 days for potential.
That's what I said, 60 days.
60 days. We didn't, we didn't think about 45 days.
Yeah, okay.
We didn't feel like that was enough time for people to gather really a robust proposal. So let's say by the end of June, we got, have that RFP out. It'll be at least two, two months before we can see what the proposals.
And Carol, we're anticipating a lot of deliberation on this. And, you know, it's really hard to pinpoint, say this is the exact date. But this is a very serious issue for council and for the city. And, you know, we've left the RFP process pretty wide open. So we're going to have some interesting responses.
Would it be fair to say when council is asked, if I may, this question that Carol received, we hope it would be before Labor Day?
The RFP itself?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, the RFP should be out in.
By 4th of July?
I heard you, but I know how these things go and how much time they take and all the other pressures that you have. So that's the answer I'm going to give.
That's fair.
Councilman Moy.
Just one comment on the residential neighborhoods discussion. And this might be directed more towards Douglas and the planning commission. But we did have some really great candidates that applied for the job of city administrator. And while they weren't as qualified as Desiree Fregoso, they had some great ideas. One of them has spent a lot of time dealing with short-term rentals. And I would suggest that we look at the policies that he wrote at Civic Grove. And the approach, just from a high level, was they capped the total number of rental licenses that could be offered. And then they also had area-based limits. So certain areas had their own cap, so sort of fixed.
This is an issue we've got to tackle.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Bell, be mindful, one point from myself. That building that we have down there is 8,000 square feet. And restaurants are required to have one space for every four seats. So we've got to be careful how we promote that when we, whether it's raised and rebuilt or whatever. That's going to be part of our parking dilemma.
And that's why we hired professionals to help us.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none, movement on. Reports from city officers, boards, commissions, accommodations, tax advisory committee, minutes are in process. Board of zoning appeals, minutes are attached. Planning commission, minutes are attached. Reports from special or joint committees, none. Petitions, we did receive a petition from residents in Forest Trail, Sparrow Drive and Forest Trail. I think there were 30 people who signed it. And just so, you know, everybody knows that we are. I'm sorry.
Forty-five.
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 That number keeps coming up.
So they, hopefully they would realize that we have phase three drainage taking place at 41st, 36th and 31st. We also did the marginal road. And our drainage is always going to keep flowing. We've got to keep working on it. We've increased our contract with EDs. SC DOT promised they'd come out every quarter and work with us. So again, this is a work in progress.
If I may add, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
FY '20 budget, proposed budget also includes $500,000 for what we're calling small but potentially high-impact projects. And we've already discussed with Thomas and Hutton to look closely at that area as a potential location for one of these projects for the next successful year.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, ordinances for second reading. We have two of them. Ordinance 201907, lot subdivision. I need a motion to approve and waive for reading. The first ordinance is ordinance doubles the minimum lot size for subdivision to 35,000 square feet for lots in SR1 district and to 16,000 square feet in areas SR2.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussions?
I didn't want Douglas to.
Douglas, yes. I was looking for you, I couldn't see you back there.
Thank you. You all will remember that this is the second time that this ordinance has come to you. It was before you last time. And I will go through the basics of the code. What was in it last time is it doubled the size, the minimum lot size for both of our residential zoning districts, SR1 and SR2. The, the reason for doing that would be to reduce density for future subdivisions. It would make it, it would make any future subdivision much less dense than currently would be allowed with the idea being that we already are overwhelming our drainage system with the density that we're allowing. And so that to continue at that rate with the system that we have would be unwise. So that's the, that's the basic principle of the ordinance. It would double the minimum lot size for future subdivisions. What came up at the last meeting was this idea that this change was going to make almost every property on, in the residential districts non-conforming. And the code had in it basically a, it's, it's five feet in one district and four feet in the other. But it had a reduction in the front and side, I'm sorry, the front and rear setbacks for non-conforming lots. So kind of an unintended consequence of this change was it was going to have the effect of reducing the setbacks for the majority of the properties on the island by four or five feet. So that, because of that nuance, it went back to the planning commission. And what you have before you tonight is an amended version. And what that does is it changes the language from saying non-conforming lots and it changes them to to direct you to the size of the lot. And it directs you back to the size that, that the zoning districts have currently required. So 8,000 for SR2 and 17,500 for SR1. So instead of saying legal non-conforming, it says if they're under that size, then you get the reduction. But if they're over that size, you would not get the reduction. So what the plan was, was to keep the setbacks consistent going forward to what they've always been in the past.
Any questions for Douglas? Don't go far because we need you again. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Number two, ordinance 201909, golf carts on the beach. We can waive the reading. This ordinance has city code consistent with state law, which allows the use of golf carts on the beach by handicapped persons who have placards for the golf carts and so registered.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just would like to make sure that we do public education to make, so that everybody understands why some golf carts are being allowed on the beach and that others don't see that and assume that they can also go on the beach.
Well, we'll have to make sure that our local papers get it out there clearly. But I think this is a smart thing to do.
And that placard is specific to the person, just as it would be in a car. It is not specific to a golf cart.
The person's using that must have the DMV, the DMV issued by the state DMV. And the handicapped placard at all times with them on the card when it's being used.
Very good.
Let me just make sure that we work with our public safety and make sure that all those, everybody is aware of the ordinance and everybody's educated on what the changes are. Because this is something new.
It happens, yeah. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous? Okay, first reading. Ordinance is, by title on ordinance 201911, lot coverage. And this is where we're going to, ordinance reduces the maximum lot area that may be covered with impervious surfaces to 35%. Currently, it's 40%. So we're reducing that down. Douglas, I may have you come up and kind of go over that because I had several calls already on that today.
So this ordinance, the, the main thrust of this ordinance is it would, and it's not in the title there, but it would require that any new. in the title there, but it would require that any new hardscape surfacing, so paving, driveways, patios, things of that nature, any of those that are new would have to be pervious, so no more concrete, no more asphalt, no more pervious surface for hard landscaping. The problem that the Planning Commission discussed with that rule, there's an architect on the Planning Commission, and he said that he kind of inherently knew that if you only pass that law, that would drive people to cover more with their house, that if the percentage was left at 40, and you pass that law, people would say, oh, well now I have 10%, more space that I can cover with porches or other parts of the house. So that's why the lot coverage limit is also being suggested to be dropped from 40 to 35, to keep people from doing that. And I would just tell you that in thinking about this concern, or the concerns that this may bring up, Planning Commission spent the last month pulling out the last year's worth of final surveys and designs to analyze the impact that that change would have, and I think they looked at about 30 different projects, and the impact was always, they really didn't want to get into people changing their house design, I think they felt like the house was kinda near and dear to owners, but they really wanted to, really wanted to focus on the surfacing that they were adding, and they were, in those examples that they looked at, overwhelmingly, it would have only impacted the hardscaping surfaces, it would not have made them modify their house plans, their amount of porches, that type things. There was one or two exceptions, but by and large, it really just got into the surfacing for their hardscaping.
Any questions for Douglas?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
This is new construction only?
Yes, the way it, and this is, the way it's currently worded, is it's dealing with new construction, so brand-new house. The wording in the ordinance now is that if you have existing surfaces, you could repair or replace those surfaces in their footprint, but even existing structures, if they were wanting to add additional driveways or add additional surfaces, those additional surfaces would have to be pervious. But you could, an owner of an existing house that had an existing surface could repair and replace it.
I think it's a great way for us to be going for drainage, I mean, I'm glad to see it coming forward. Any other questions for Douglas?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion, all say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Number two, ordinance 201912, film permit. Streamline this process for request for commercial photographs, film, video on the beach, after review, staff may approve small, unobtuse of projects. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous? Ordinance 201913, prohibit, prohibit single-use plastic bags, straws, styrofoam coolers, food containers, cups, and balloons on the beach.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any other discussion?
I just want to say, I'm very proud of us, I think that we continue to lead, and we need to continue to be leaders in being good citizens to our beach, that means so much to everybody who lives here.
Very good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Okay, miscellaneous, none, next meeting 6:00 PM Tuesday, June 25th, no executive session needed, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye.